Good afternoon. I'd like to open up the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners meeting of January 28th. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And we'll start out, as we always do, with silent prayer and a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic-
For which is one nation-
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next order of business is approval of the minutes of the previous session. Is there a motion?
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comments. I'll ask Bridget, is there anyone on the line as it relates to either the agenda or just general public comments?
We do have a couple people on the line, and if they would like to speak, if they could raise their hand by indicating on the bottom of their screen.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And it does not look like we have public comment at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our own comments and motions. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say today, I held a press conference today to announce the COVID-19 Economic Recovery and Relief Task Force, and just really want to, I'm excited to get started and been working with the administration internally on this, and looking forward to getting going. Certainly, you know, people need help, and we'll be making some key decisions in the next week or so on funding. And so I want to also thank Commissioner Drehouse, who was able to join today and be there with me. Appreciate that, and we're doing a great job on the health side that Commissioner Drehouse has pulled together folks and kept us informed and the people informed. And I'm looking forward to doing similar work on the economic side, so that we're helping people both with their life and their livelihood at the same time, and I know that's important to our board. So excited to get moving and grooving and going. I do want to acknowledge, because from time to time we get, all of us get letters, but certainly when someone sends me a handwritten letter, and Eva Fitzpatrick, who sent me a handwritten letter talking about trying to hold on to her home. She has been a homeowner and been paying taxes, she says, since 1968. She says that she's on a fixed income at 85 years of age, and at the same time not getting anything additional. And COVID on top of that has just hit her doubly hard, and certainly needs as much help as she can to try to stay, she says, in her home and be a part of Hamilton County. She goes on to talk about she paid her dues and paid her taxes and certainly need help. So again, I'm saying that to say that there's still a lot of people that need help. And you all did a great job last year. Nobody could have predicted COVID and had to have CARES Act, had to get it out quickly and help as many people as we could. But now 2021, people still are unemployed, still are trying to hold on to their homes, still are trying to pay their rent. And I know we'll be making some decisions in the next couple of weeks on funding, and the task force will allow us to be able to, I think, even strengthen the coordination of getting out the information and outreach and connecting with folks with this. So I'm excited about it. I'm excited to get moving on it. It's something I got the chance to see firsthand as I was running and told the folks that this is what I wanted to work on, as I saw so many people needing food that never had to need food, so many people needing unemployment who had never vowed for unemployment before, don't know how to do it, had never had to navigate our system because they've never had to ask for help. So this is something I'm excited to get working on and get moving on. So this was great today. The press conference was great, and I'm looking forward to reporting even more on the issues of the task force as we report.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. My only comment is also COVID-related. As we all know, we set up a hotline for those that are uncomfortable or can't access the internet to try to understand how to get signed up for the vaccine as they become eligible. And so it's the 211 line. United Way is our partner in this. And so I went over last week to visit those that are answering the phones, just to get a sense of, you know, what they're hearing, the length of the call, what the concerns are. And so I got to listen in on a couple calls, and it was, it was great to see the people that are answering the phones, the 211, their patience, their compassion, their understanding with a population that is now eligible, that it was at that time 80 years and over, now it's 75 and over, and trying to help folks navigate what is really complicated for everybody. And this particular woman was trying to get her husband signed up, and it was, it was just very heartwarming, really, to see the compassion that the call answerer had for her questions and some of the confusion that she relayed to him. So, you know, she got connected to the right entity. She is part of a hospital system. She didn't realize that was a good portal, and so they got her, you know, pointed in the right direction. So really proud that we collectively were able to stand that up along with the city, and it's going well. They've gotten thousands of calls. Just so people know, if you don't get someone, because it's very active, the phone lines are active, people do call back, and so they do get to talk to someone if they've called the 211 line. If they get on testandprotectcincy.com, it's a little more efficient to do it that way, and that's pretty explicit, too, as far as how to help people, people get to the right system to get signed up for the vaccine. So I just want to give a plug, but also say thank you, thank you, to those over at the call center at the United Way for doing the work on, really, the behalf of everybody in the county. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. I just have a few comments. This week, we, I met with the EMA program, the Emergency Management Agency, with Nick Crossley, and I was elected chair of that group. They do a lot of good work, and of course, we know they've been very instrumental in with the vaccine and the COVID and protective equipment. So just excited about continuing to be a part of that. They're also looking at their accreditation, which would be the first time as a public safety entity that that would happen. I'm sure that will happen for them. Also, I had a meeting with Sheriff McGuffey and just talked about her visions, her goals, what the goals are for the county, and trying to get in line with her and her getting in line with us as it relates to where she wants to go in the county. I'm excited about her excitement and where she wants to go and some of the innovative and creative ideas that she has. Also, the Board of Revision, I had a talk with them after I had my meeting. I'm still in need of two additional members to represent the president's office. Our two representatives are great. They've been there for a long time. One of them is leaving out for the whole month of February, which she always does, and the other gentleman, his mom is not doing well, so he has to spend a lot of time with her, but he is committed to remaining to be a part of that. So I am still, and possibly only one additional person, because I did have a phone call right before I got on, someone who was really interested in the possibility of being a part of that. And also, I talked to Renee Mahaffey from the closing, the Health Gap, and she's going to be talking with us on our next agenda, but the great things that they're doing, and she's going to bring a summary forth for the commission and also for the people as it relates to disparity, racial disparity with the vaccine and also the ability to get tested. So I'm looking forward to that. I attended the HCLRC meeting as it relates to the Port Authority and what properties have been developed, redeveloped, what acquisitions have been made, what their future goals are. And specifically, our last meeting, I asked them to bring a presentation as it relates to affordable housing. I thought it was a great presentation and provided a lot of insights specifically on where they are working at. Of course, we have much more work to do, and I also asked at the end if they could kind of show me their financial structure as they decide the cost of these houses that they're either buying or redeveloping, and how we can make sure when we send a message to be in support of this group, that when we say affordable housing, that we're not talking about $300,000 houses. So that certainly is not affordable, but they're going to look at that at the next meeting, their financial structure. And just wanted to inform our public that are watching that Hamilton County is still in a state of emergency as it relates to the pandemic. We will probably very quickly be passing another state of emergency for Hamilton County, but I'm hoping that soon we won't even have to do that. But what I'd like to say is our residents seem to be listening as it relates to some of the precautions that need to be taken, because our numbers are going down somewhat, still too high, but they're going down, and we're not aware of right now what the governor is going to say. We're in purple, and hopefully we will go down to red. But I just wanted to thank our residents who are listening and doing the right thing. And I think that will end my report.
Madam President, can I ask a question? Related to the Board of Revision, last year, or maybe it was the year prior, we did have a third member that was on the board. She took a break during COVID because she was uncomfortable, I think, participating in person. And so I'm just wondering if she has decided to not participate or if she is still a member. I don't know if you know that, but I do want to just raise that, because she, from what I understood, wanted to take the break for COVID, but then wanted also to come back.
Right. Thank you for that comment, and she's decided not to come back this year. Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up.
So are you, are you looking for folks to apply?
Yes. Certainly, they have to apply and be evaluated, and we're hoping that it's someone with a background in real estate or reading appraisals that would be very helpful. Maybe a project director would be good. You're looking at property assessments and whether or not you're in agreement with the valuation that's been given by the auditor's office. And as I said last week, the representatives are the auditor, the treasurer, and then the president of the commission. So anyone interested, certainly, please, please put in.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll move on to our county administrator, Jeff Aluto. You have some by leaves.
Thank you, Madam President. You have several by leaves and a few comments first. I did notice that it snowed last night a bit more than maybe we thought it was going to, so I did want to thank county facilities. They always do such a great job of monitoring that and getting out and making sure that, regardless of where you are in the downtown county campus, that the pathways are plowed, salted, the plazas are cleared, that type of thing. So just want to thank Ralph, Tony Motte, and all of their staff who get up, I was going to say brighten early, but let's just say early to make it, to make that happen. Also, want to put in a little plug for the county administration's new podcast, which we've been doing now for maybe a little over a month. But for folks out there who specifically have an interest, especially in maybe the wonkier or nuts and bolts side of local government, we do a typically, we try to do it around every other week or so where we focus on an element of county government. It's been heavily focused on COVID at this point, but we've had the Health Commissioner on. We've done deep dives with our HR department, Job and Family Services, our CARES Act distribution. The latest one we did was focus on our 911 office and the challenges that they face during a time of COVID. So we'll be doing another one in a week or so, and people can access that by going to the county administrators' page on HamiltonCountyOhio.gov. And really just want to thank Bridget Dory for all of her work in pulling, pulling that together. So those are my comments in terms of by leaves. Commissioner, I've got five of them that are, that are listed in your pack. Actually, by leave number five is the resolution related to Commissioner Reese's task force. I will leave that for her when we get to that. So I've really got four by leaves here. Number one is a budget adjustment. This is 5.4 million for community development and municipal court grants, and those community development grants relate specifically to the action plan, the grants and the action plan that the board has recently done several public hearings about and voted to file with the federal government. So you have a budget adjustment to appropriate those grants, as well as a $3.7 million appropriation for lodging tax accounting entries. And I want to be clear about this. This is, this is really an accounting journal entry where the, the cash has already moved for this back in 2020, but in order to make the accompanying journal entries in the system, the auditor's office needs the appropriations in order to make those, those entries. This is really a cleanup item from, from 2020. The board won't see that very often. So with that, I know Budget Director Brugen is on the line, happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, the administration recommends approval.
Are there any questions from any of the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. I think maybe we should do them separately, since they're so different. So I'm going to make a motion to adopt by leave one, budget adjustment number three, 5.4 million for community development and municipal court grants, and 3.7 million for lodging tax accounting entries.
Second. Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
By leave number two. You're welcome.
Thank you, commissioners. Yes, by leave number two is a, this relates to our CARES Act program. Now that we've had the CARES Act extended through the end of the year, we have a resolution authorizing the administrator to enter into a third amendment to the subrecipient agreement between the board and St. Vincent de Paul. St. Vincent de Paul had already received an agreement of, I believe it was $350,000 to serve as one of the points of contact for our rental assistance program. They've served a little over 200 households now. I think they have 40 on their list and need an additional appropriation to allow them to continue that, that work. And so the, the adjustment here is an $80,000 adjustment to their contract to bring it to a total of 430. It says 430 on your by leave agenda. It's not an adjustment of 430,000, but an adjustment of 80,000 to bring their total contract to 430. And just as a way of an aside, we have served close to 3,000 units now, or residents now, through the, through the rental assistance program, and St. Vincent de Paul is, of course, one of those providers. So Holly is on. If there's any additional detail that folks would like out of this, but the administration does recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, Madam President, thank you. I do want to just highlight this one because this is, has been a high priority for the commission because it's such a high need for the residents. And as we recall, St. Vincent de Paul was the fourth provider that kind of came in at the end there, because we wanted to get the dollars out as quickly as possible. So I want to thank them for, you know, their flexibility here, and I think to provide further funding to keep people in their homes is a really important thing to do. So I, I'm grateful that this one is in front of us.
Great. Thank you. And Jeff, you explained it fairly well, so I don't have to read the whole thing, but I make a motion to adopt by leave two.
Thank you. Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. By leave item number three, this is a resolution. The board actually heard about this in staff meeting a couple of weeks ago, I believe, and this relates to a contractual agreement between the Hamilton County Communications Center and the City of Norwood for Public Safety Dispatching Services. We were advised that a, I believe, a week or so ago, Norwood formally approved their intention to contract with the Hamilton County Communications Center. Again, as we discussed a few weeks ago in staff meeting, this has been a long policy goal of the county to defragment and continue to defragment our emergency communication system, to have one funnel point for 911 call, or if not one, then as few as possible funnel points for 911 services as we can, just to make sure that those, that any hurdles associated with that fragmentation were cleared. And so this Norwood was one of three remaining public safety answering points in the county. With this contract, we will be down to two. Hamilton County in the, in the areas that we serve and the City of Cincinnati, which, from an industry perspective, I think you can make a very good case that once you start to hit the size of both the unincorporated areas of the county and the size of the City of Cincinnati, that you're getting really close to economies of scale there that work. There's been talk in the past about, well, shouldn't we have one public safety answering point? And I think that there, there's been a lot of studies about that, but I think that those locally here in the industry would be very comfortable getting down to the point where we have two public safety answering points that can back up for each other, serve as, serve as backups when, when needed. And moving to this, to this point is a huge policy accomplishment for the county. Andy is, Director Andy Knapp is on the line if there are any additional questions. There is a revenue stream that comes with this, roughly $9,483 per month that would be paid in dispatch fees to the county. Again, the administration recommends approval, but if there are any direct questions for Director Knapp, I'm happy to, direct questions to the director.
Thanks, Jeff. Any comments from our commissioners?
Yes, Madam President. Jeff, one of the things that Andy brought up in our staff meeting, I just wanted to make sure we highlight as people are watching those, particularly in Norwood who may work there now. He talked about jobs and offering opportunities for them to be a part of this. So I didn't know maybe if you or him could comment on that. I thought that was important.
Yeah, great point, Commissioner. And I know that, that Director Knapp is working with Norwood on, on that very point. I'll turn it over to him in just a second. I will say this, though, and this gets back to the podcast that I referenced earlier. And if Andy wants to comment on this, he can. As most 911 centers are, we're really constantly in a state of hiring at the 911 center. This is an industry where there is typically a lot of churn from an employee perspective. And as I think Andy brought up on, on the podcast, that, that specific individuals who make great career candidates for, for 911 operations are individuals who have historically or previously been in the service industry, in particular restaurants, that type of thing, because they're, they understand customer service, they understand multitasking with various things. I'll, I'll leave it to Andy, who's the, the industry expert on this, but as we talk about jobs, I also want to note to the commissioners that we are working with 911 and Job and Family Services to try to draw linkage there as well, that would both benefit the community and our 911 center. So Andy, I'll turn it over to you for any more you want to say about that specifically to address the commissioner's question about Norwood and potential employment of individuals from the Norwood PSAP.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Thanks, commissioners. You're exactly correct, Commissioner Reese. We have made offers to the City of Norwood to work with their staff. They have approximately eight full-time members that, that are going to be displaced as a result of this move by the city, and that's part of what made it somewhat difficult for them to, a decision where it's going to displace employees. In this scenario, it is my understanding that they have found placement for at least five of their employees, which then, you know, leaves the additional three. And so we've, again, extended those opportunities to those three dispatchers, and I have, I know at least one that is, is in our process. We certainly would never turn away someone with some experience from another municipality and welcome them into our organization. And just exactly right, as a whole, the 911 industry itself has a very difficult time finding just the right person who has the right skill set and then the right attitude and abilities to operate in our environment. It's, it's a very fast-paced, it's, can be a high-stress job, but having been a 911 operator myself since 1988, I can tell you it's a very rewarding career. I haven't looked back twice on it. I've been strictly in the 911 business since, you know, 1988 and enjoy every minute of it. And we like to find more of those people that want to be career-oriented, that want to find something where they can make a difference in their community and, and then have, you know, make a good living and work for the government in a nice, secure location that has secure employment with good benefits over a long period of time. So we, we have a continuous posting on the HR website. The job description is, is called a communications officer, and we have a process in place right now to try to fill some vacancies. And the challenge is, and I'll try to keep it brief, but the challenge is it takes a very long time to train our, our dispatchers and call takers. You know, the training process is approximately six months, and, and that's just, you know, because of the nature of the, of the job and how high-profile it is and how little discretionary time we have to make decisions, that we really need to vet them very well and make sure that they have good training. So I have probably the best staff that I could possibly wish for. They work in, in crazy conditions, and they always seem to make things come out with an absolute positive ending to the extent that they can. I'm quite proud of them. So I appreciate the opportunity to kind of showcase our employees.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional, Commissioner Reese?
No, that was it. I wanted to make sure people-
Okay. Commissioner Drehouse?
No questions.
Okay. I just want to thank Andy and Jeff. They've been working so hard to make this happen, and I believe it's a win-win for both Norwood and for our county. So thank you so much. And Jeff, I said earlier, you did a fairly good summary the last time. You did a great summary the last time and this time. So we'll move forward with by leave number three. I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave three.
Second. Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. By leave number four, I'll give a little bit of background on this one as well. This is an item that relates to the conclusion of a audit from HUD of our CDVG Home Repair Program between 2015 and 2017. Specific to the item, one of the findings was that the county was using a negotiated flat rate to pay our vendor, PWC, for the home repair services, where federal accounting rules require that each job be billed at specific rates. So over the course of that audit, the finding was that the difference between those two different approaches was approximately $338,000. So we worked with HUD over a period of time on a remedy whereby we will transfer non-federal funding, non-federal dollars, which were already planned to be used for community development-type purposes into our HUD line of credit. So practically, what that means for the board is that we would be transferring 338,000 from our $1.5 million Economic Revitalization Grant Fund, which is in the budget this year, into the HUD line of credit and implementing that slice of the program through the HUD line of credit and through HUD rules and procedures. So the purposes of those two programs, the HUD grants and our community revitalization grants largely mirror each other. So in the end, there's no, there should be no real impact to the county from a policy perspective or from a programmatic perspective. The real difference here is just moving dollars that we were going to spend through our community revitalization grant into our HUD line of credit for essentially, essentially spend them on the same purpose. So no need to reduce any future grants, no need, no direct financial economic harm to the county. So I think it's a good remedy to what is largely an accounting finding from, from HUD. So this will close out this particular audit of HUD, so the administration does recommend approval.
Thank you, Jeff. Vice President Aluchia Reese, you have any comments?
I just wanted, I know this is something that's been, I guess, negotiated and it's a complex situation, but I was advised by the buyer-
But I was advised by the by legal counsel that it is a hard deadline that needed to be done right away. So today I'll have to abstain because I don't want to hold it up because we have a hard deadline, but it's a very complex thing that I know they've been working so hard on. For a long, so and I'm just getting here. So. So anyway, that's that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yeah, I'd like to thank staff for finding an approach. That allows us to continue to do the work we need to do out in the community. Related to this resolution. So especially those in the prosecutor's office, some of whom I think are on the call. Thank you for, you know, looking at this in a kind of a creative, forward thinking way so that, you know, we're held harmless here. So. Appreciate the work you've done and I'm prepared to move forward.
Thank you. My comment, I I believe it's a win win again. Because this money that we're allocating, we obviously had an issue that HUD brought up. That we needed to resolve, but through creative thinking through our our legal staff, we're able to put the money in toward the same projects. That we would normally do instead of having to pay. Three hundred and thirty eight thousand and it goes into a dark hole, not to do anything with it. So it just is an opportunity to continue our focus on economic development. And to to just transfer the money in a different pot. So I'm also in support of this. So what I'll do with no further discussion, I make a motion to adopt by leave four.
Second.
Commissioner Samardumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese? Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And so again, as I said before, by leave five, I will defer to Vice President Reese to discuss the. By the five, which is the resolution for the Economic Recovery and Relief Task Force.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, and to the commission. By leave five is a resolution in in January, we passed the organization of our. Of our board. And each of us always have something that we're, you know, going to lead or passionate about. And one of the things that I wanted to work on is. An economic recovery and relief task force. And it's, you know, it's nothing new. This is something that I have said I wanted to do when I. Travel the county during these very tough times. Heard from people, was at pop up food pantries. And ultimately, you know, but put the idea out there. And I do want to thank it got over, you know, two hundred thousand folks that voted for me and I wanted to keep true to what I said that I was going to do. I would have liked to have gotten it out a little sooner than now, but what I wanted to do is be able to have an opportunity to sit down with our administration so that I could understand and we could. Work together. I wanted to have their touches on this as well. But we are at a critical point. We're going into February, the first of the month is coming. That means rent is due. Bills are due. Mortgage is due. Gas and electric now is not pushed back. That is due now. And so people have to start paying these things and we've had lots of calls. I'm sure others have as well. And I've only been three weeks where people said they they, you know, where do I go? How do I do it? And so we've been trying to get them to the right place. What was done in twenty twenty, I think, was great by the board who had to, you all had to move quickly. Didn't know pandemic was coming. COVID money didn't know, had to get it out, get it in the streets and that was great. As we move into twenty twenty one. And we have governors around the country, we have other folks talking about how they're going to recover in their areas, their counties, how they're going to provide relief. I thought certainly we want to be in the forefront of that. So the resolution that we have here, one does not have any appropriation like the other by leaves that are on here. So there's no money that we're voting on today. But what it does do is put together an economic recovery and relief task force that will focus on the following areas. One, it will focus on giving the taxpayer a break, focused on tax and rate relief. Job retention, reemployment, food stabilization, housing. Small business relief, infrastructure, transportation. It will also work on advocacy as it relates to state and federal levels regarding getting more resources back to. Hamilton County residents and businesses. It will direct our administration to come back to us fairly quickly, probably the next week or two. To talk about an internal team. There'll be two phases of the task force. The first phase that we would be launching is what I call the right now phase. And the right now phase would help coordinate all of these. We have different entities doing these things. They're doing a great, but bring it all in, going into one direction. With one Hamilton County, one, one message, one voice, one word, one place to go, portals. Looking at looking at potential navigators, but all those things will come back to us as we look at how these things would be funded. The administration would be pulling together an internal team to look at how do we do this in a more of a one stop way. I think we are doing a great job. Commissioner Drehouse on the health side, she brought all these entities together. We have briefings every week from the health component. We have now a one stop portal now for the health side of things. We have navigators as it relates to health that she said she just went and visited with where they're taking phone calls. Well, this will make the second part complete because people are focused on both their life and their livelihood. And so that would give the economic side where we would have the one portal, we would have possible navigators to help small businesses. Who by the time they find out how to do the PPP is already gone because if you don't have a big time banker or a big time lawyer. You can't, you spend all your time trying to figure it out. It takes the website that we've got now, which we had to put up very quickly. But now it's going to take the website where it doesn't require you to print out here or go here or call over here or go over here. You could go to one place and and be able to get it. You'll be able to, you know, hopefully have our partner, we could extend our partnerships, have navigators, one place to get it. So those are the things that the task force would be bringing back to us. Phase two of it would be the external task force, which would come back to us where we would then look at. Who should be on these committees externally to look at the rebuilding once we stabilize? How do we rebuild and reopen and invest in the future for Hamilton County? So I've. Spent a lot of time. The reason it's coming in as a by leave today, I wanted to make sure that the administration was. Okay with it and we went back and forth doing it, trying to make sure it's proper. So it's ready to go. But considering that people need help right now. I just feel like it would be great if we should be able to move forward with it. It's something that I had talked to the offices when we were trying to organize ourselves. And then talk to the offices. It's it's hard because we can't talk to each other, but talking through your each other's staff. To try to get this movement. So it doesn't have appropriation. The administration will come back with appropriations for the different components. Not the task force. Task force doesn't cost anything. All the money will be going out the door to help the people, but I would like to be able to have Jeff and the staff to get moving with the internal action team. So they can get back to us and we can get start getting this information out. So that's kind of what the resolution is. And so that's what I'm presenting today. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, I I don't know if there's a motion on the floor, but I I do want to just with a caveat, I'm supporting the resolution. I think it's a good idea to try to create a common portal for people who are looking for relief, whether it's, you know, some of the programs we've stood up or. Or some of the other elected officials at the county that have done things to also provide relief. So I'm supportive of the idea. In the creation of an internal task force to coordinate those efforts. I I do want to clarify something, though. It is my understanding that there will be no, we are already expecting a report related to the COVID dollars. That fell to the bottom from last year. It's about six or seven million. The staff has already said they wanted to wait until the beginning of February to see what the federal government and state government are doing related to rent assistance. So that was very helpful that the federal government decided to provide resources for that. So that will no longer be on the county's list. But we're expecting that report here within the week or two. So that we can get a better understanding of what was left over and what those priorities are going to be moving forward as recommended by the administration. And then, you know, we obviously will weigh in. So I just want to be clear that there's no, or I guess I'm asking. The timing of this resolution is not related to that report that we are all expecting to get within the next week or two.
Yeah, I wanted, so that's why I'm wanting to get the resolution passed because. As the administration is putting that report together, but in that with that needs to also be the communication of how we're going to outreach, how we go. They would like to have that included, how we're going to, you know, this is their recommendation. Obviously, we'll be putting our touches on it. I have to. I is also all of us do, but in there it would allow them to also have how we're going to get it out. And I just don't want this to be, we we get this report, now we just now getting the resolution. They say, oh, well, oh, well, we'll get the portal in there. We'll figure this out. It again, we're trying to bring all this stuff streamlined so it's quicker and easier and to the public. So. No, not intended to slow that down at all, but I think this would help if this was already passed as well.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple comments. Someone's trying to speak. Okay, there there is no motion on the floor because I wanted to allow a conversation between the commissioners. So we will. Possibly bring forth a motion. I have a couple comments. I'm excited about the resolution. I think it includes a lot of different ideas. And as you were saying, there's a diversity of ideas, a diversity of strategy, a diversity of all, you know, different ways of implementing this process. I just received it yesterday and and I just need more time to review the resolution. There are so. So much in the resolution and even though it's no funding involved at this point, there's still some. Things in there that I have some questions about, some comments about, and and so this resolution is no different for me than any of the others. Historically, since I've been here, I I've been asking for additional time to review. And this is a a major move, a major. Creative input as it relates to what we want to do economically, and I think that's a great thing, but I need time to. Reevaluate some of the strategies to make sure we're not being redundant in some of the services or strategies that are being used that staff is already using. So, you know, I'm not trying to put a damper on it. I think it's a great thing. But, you know, I need more than twenty four hours to make an informed decision. I would ask if the commission could defer the resolution until next week at our next regular committee meeting. And then to vote on it then. I don't want to vote no because it's a great idea, but I need more than. Well, less than twenty four hours to review. And I think my review and also Commissioner Drehouse's review, and I can't speak for her, will maybe add something to the resolution that's not there. Or make a suggestion to take something out that already exists. So I just need that opportunity to do that. And so.
Madam President, let me say this because I know people are watching and I'm trying to figure out what is our, what is the. You know, I've only been here three weeks and I'm trying to figure out what is the process because. A lot of times when we slow things down, we put it in process and I've seen things come in by leaves less than twenty four hours that are millions of dollars. I've seen consent calendars with sixty million dollar bundles and we move forward. I've seen where theirs have decimals was wrong on the on the bundles. And we move forward with it and just say, what is it? It kept moving. I'm talking about millions. And so I I don't mind the question that I do want to thank Commissioner Drehouse. The issue that's hard is that because of the state law, we're not allowed to talk to each other. But we all are each individually elected and the way I kind of operate as an elected official. You've got votes, she's got votes. I've got by two hundred and twelve thousand votes as well. And when an elected official sends me something, I usually take precedence to it because they've been elected and it must be something important. But I'm just confused because we've got other by leaves that came in twenty four hours. I've been here and seen consent agendas that are in bundles that are millions of dollars and don't even talk about the line item of who we're paying. And I've and I've mentioned it, one or two I might have pulled over, but I mean, I done voted for more than, I think, only four million I've questioned. Out of, you know, over sixty million dollars. And so I do want to thank Commissioner Drehouse. I understand what she's saying and I think she did make a correction. Or or not a correction, but she made a recommendation. We took that recommendation and put it in the resolution. We also had a resolution we gave to the administration. And they took and put their piece, their touches on it. And we put their input into it as well and we got it to. Administration gave us theirs back at one thirty PM, but I have gotten emails at seven PM at night. I've gotten emails on Sundays, which is my holy day and I've said all the time, I don't read stuff on Sunday because that's my holy day. And then I've been expected. I am in this office right now with a table and not a desk with any chairs. And I mean, with any with any drawers and I've been expected to vote on stuff. I just got cameras and computers at work, but I'm expected to move forward and voting on things. So my point is I just don't want to have double standards that when I show up. That all of a sudden we got processed when I'm looking at these by leaves that come in. And I for me, it would be even more difficult if I was, I thank God I'm here in the office because if I was at home, I couldn't have got these by leave. At the last minute and come forward. So I don't mind.
So are you going to allow me to answer some of those you said?
Well, no, I wasn't finished yet. I wasn't finished. You can answer. I wasn't finished with it. I just want to tell you it's hard, it's difficult because we can't talk to each other, obviously.
It's not difficult because we have our chiefs of staff that can communicate.
Yeah, and they talked at one thirty before these by leaves, these by leaves that came in, three point seven million dollars. Five point four million dollars we just passed, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars we just passed. And then we got something here that basically says what we already have passed, that all we're saying is that the task force is going to report back to us. With how we can better communicate. And all I'm doing is what Commissioner Drehouse is doing on the COVID side with the health side. And I would be on the economic side and we had, I thought the chief of staff had communicated that to you when we were organized. Because that's what I thought we had agreed to. Otherwise, all of a sudden, the portion that I agreed to is being questioned. So I just want to know what are we doing because this has no money and and we need more time. And we've got by leaves with millions and it's coming in sometimes later than this this. And I would have gotten it earlier to you. I wanted to get it early to everybody, but I wanted to get the administration to also weigh in on it. And make sure that it was done properly. And then we got it at one thirty and then I want to thank Commissioner Drehouse. She, we bet with the chief of staff. Commissioner Drehouse got right back with us and we made the corrections and we got it back out to anybody. So the reason it's not for me, I want to be clear, this is about. People need help now and I, this is what I want to work on. This is what I said to the people, the two hundred and twelve thousand people that voted for me that I would work on. And I just ready, I'm ready to get to work on it if possible. So that's what I wanted to share. I just don't want people thinking that I'm. Getting stuff out here at the last minute and waiting to the last minute. And I didn't want people to think that this resolution is really so one page, one and a half page thing. I didn't want them to think that I was putting something forward for millions of dollars. Which I wasn't and I didn't want them to think that we were taking the power away from the Cali Commission because they, this says that they will report directly back to us immediately. So I just wanted to make sure that that part was clear.
Is that it?
For now, yes.
Let me answer a couple of questions. First of all, we all know as commissioners that people are in dire need of every service. Every opportunity to get their, to keep their restaurants open, to have food. We're all very much aware of that and that's why we implement it. Using the CARES Act to try to get the money out the door as soon as possible. So we're very aware of the need economically. And socially, physically, homeless people, we're all aware of that and that's why we're here. We've made that known. And as it relates to passing things at the, you know, at the last minute. I need to clarify because I want our residents that are watching, we all know that people are watching. We go over this information. We've, as you were saying, you've been here for. We go over this information, uh, we've, as you were saying, you've been here for three weeks. We've discussed, discussed, uh, went back and forth, made suggestions, comments with our legal team, each commissioner. As it relates to, um, the items that have been passed today and, and the couple of weeks before and before you came. So I don't want our public to think that we just automatically, um, agree with 3.5 million or 6 million. Or however else the, the amount is, even 9,000. We ask many, many questions before it comes to a vote, so it's not just all of a sudden. And then, um, it has nothing to do with you and your resolution and what Commissioner, uh, Drehouse is doing. People look at, um, items and issues at different levels. Some, uh, I'm a very analytical person, I like to look at each part of the resolution, uh, to see if I can add. Um, see if I can make a suggestion, and having less than 24 hours is not enough time. As far as process, there are some processes that take place here, there are some procedures. I remember former, uh, Victoria, Commissioner Victoria Parks, she brought forth racism. Uh, as an, as an issue in Hamilton County. We looked over that resolution, I, I want to say at least four times, maybe five times. So it has nothing to do with you and your resolution, uh, we just review, come up with other things. Um, it is all of a sudden, like I said, less than 24 hours, and I think I should, uh, be given the opportunity. To take a look at, and I know you were saying Commissioner Reese made a comment, and that's great. Um, but I really take time, I research, I look at what's existing in the county already. So we're not, as I said earlier, redundant on what we're providing. So, uh, it has nothing to do with you, and there is not a habit of just blatantly or just, uh, willy-nilly putting stuff on the. Agenda and not reviewing it, so even though you, um, may have for the first time seen it, we've seen it. And we've seen it, and we've seen it, and so of course you can abstain, we're not asking you to vote on what you don't have enough time. And I know you've said several times, since you've been here, I need more time as, to review this, uh, this is the first I'm seeing it. So it's no different for me, it's the first time for me. Um, so I'm just asking to, um, give me a little time to do it. Um, and, um, next week, I don't think it's too much to ask. I understand what your agenda is as it relates to when you want to get it out. And we definitely, as a commission, want to get out more to help our people. But I want to do it in a more organized fashion, and that's why I'm asking for an extension of the time. It's not to squash anything that you're trying to do, but to move forward in a more, uh, organized, uh, way. And not to just throw this out, even though there is no money right now involved in it, and it may be in the future. Strategically, I want to look at what we're trying to do, uh, for the county.
Thank you. Madam President, I, I don't have a problem with you getting more time, but I want to make sure that we're, because I'm coming from the outside in. Not from the inside in, and just in my observation, uh, even though you say you've had more time and time and time to look over something, I did it. And, uh, there, out of all of over $60 million worth of votes, I've only questioned four million of it. And, um, and those were in consent, uh, calendars. And if a person was new and had just never been in office before, had never been elected to city council like I was and been on the finance committee. Had never been at the state, elected as a state representative, had been on the finance committee, they would have went on with it. Because they didn't know everything's on consent. Uh, and so, uh, but there was no consideration that, hey, she just got here. And we already want $60 million, and she ain't been here for 48 hours. So I don't have a problem, uh, I, I guess my whole point was, I don't want, I hate, I would hate, I just don't like the things that have. No money attached, has more scrutiny than those that have money attached. So I don't know if it go over and over and over there, I looked at our calendar when we received some of these by leaves today. And it was received after we had sent out our resolution. So I wanted to make sure that that is accurate and factual, uh, information, uh, today. I don't have a problem with it, I just wanted to let you know I'm excited to get started, I'm excited to get moving on this. I, I, I'm going to be moving, um, I'd like to move, uh, with all of us moving in that direction. Um, but I'm going to do what I said that I was going to do, so sometimes for me, I'm coming from the outside in, not from the inside out. And I'm coming not from a personal perspective, but what I'm hearing from the people. And for us, sometimes it's a little more, a little comfortable because we're getting a check every two weeks. Uh, we don't have to worry about the things that other people are worrying about. I've been on that side, but I didn't have the check to every two weeks, so we don't have a check every two weeks, every single day matters. So that's what, and I'm not saying what you did before I got here wasn't good, you did a great job. I'm just saying now 2021, there are new bills that need to be paid, uh, new challenges that have to be met. And I'm looking forward to moving in that direction. Each of us have our own style. And each people, even Tyler Tumman, he was there, he had his style. Everybody has their style, Chris Monzel had his style. Um, and so my style is, I like to be moving quicker to get things out the door, to help the people. And, uh, this is one of the things that I like to do, so I'm excited to get started with it. And I'm always open to suggestions and those kind of things. But what I like to do is move quick because people are getting hit quick. And so I just wanted to say that, to know that it's nothing personal, it's just what the people have asked me to do.
And, and I don't take it as personal at all, uh, we're, and I don't think the check is why we're here, it's a nice check, but we're here. I can't speak for everybody, but because people are important. And when you, when you talk about coming from the inside, from the outside in, we go all at that point, at some point. And if you look at my record, when I first started, I abstained or said no on lots of things. Because I was not a part of that discussion, so that's, that's just what we have to do. But at some point, there are timelines that have to be met. Uh, and so we have to move forward even with or without you or me or whoever it may be. So that's why sometimes things have to move forward, um, so I'm not going to belabor this. And I would like, I would like to ask that we, um, delay this until next week, next Thursday. And Jackie, I was just wondering, uh, how, how's the commissioners as it relates to delaying that?
Um, I would say that, um, at this point, someone would make a motion. To hold the item for two weeks, if that's, or we, and if, and if you, you get a second for that, then there'll be a vote. And, uh, then we'll go from there.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to delay by leave five until next, our next regular meeting.
And when is that, next regular? Is that Tuesday?
Our regular meeting, not our staff meeting, but, um, I'm not, I'm not against having it for our staff meeting.
So that would either be the second or the fourth. The fourth is Thursday and, and Tuesday is the second.
Is there a second?
I, I'm not sure what the motion is, is it for?
Lay by leave five to, um.
February 2nd is, is Tuesday.
Jackie, thank you. February the 2nd is our staff meeting, and if I have until February the 2nd, I can, um, be prepared to vote yes or no on that.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam President, may I weigh in? I just want to weigh in very quickly about the procedural nature of this discussion. Because, you know, we all came in new at one point, um, and I think we were all trying to get our feet under us as to how things work at the county. And, and when we see information, and so, um, I just want to be clear that, you know, the staff, especially the clerk's office. Tries to get us information well in advance of a vote, and we do, and, and for the public too. I mean, I, most importantly probably, is that the public is able to review information about a week and a half before we actually take votes on things. Um, and so, and, and we also have pre-agenda meetings where our staff goes in, and if there are questions or concerns related to an item. Um, each office is represented and they get to voice those concerns. And so I, I just want to say that none of what we vote on should be new. Um, because we've gotten the information in advance and the public has also had a chance to review that information. By leaves behave a little differently, and so I think sometimes we do get things that are, um, you know, not, not necessarily the first time we've seen them. But, but not as well that it is some of the other stuff, um, depending on the nature of it. Um, and some of them, like the ones we had today, we've had numerous conversations in executive session. And at some of our staff meetings related to these items, and so again, um, the topics aren't new. The by leave item though, was not introduced in time to get onto a regular agenda, and so that's why it shows up via a by leave. So I, I just want to be clear, especially for the public that's listening in, um, that we are, are trying to be as transparent as possible. Um, and maybe Jackie, it would be helpful, and we all needed this, when, when we, I know I did, uh, when we came in. Because we've got different, you know, we've got the regular agenda, we've got the consent agenda, we have by leaves, I mean, what is the difference and when do we see this stuff? So it might be helpful to have i- that conversation, uh, maybe in a staff meeting, just to kind of lay it out. So not only are, you know, all of us clear, but so is the viewing public clear on when they have access to these documents. That are going to come in front of us at a future date, so I, I think that might be worthy of a conversation. Uh, not at this meeting necessarily, but maybe at a staff meeting.
And Commissioner Drehouse, what you're saying, that is, that is what I was told was the process, but it doesn't always act like, I've got, I've got emails. So it is not always like that. And I know I got to catch up because you might have seen it before I got here, different things, but, and I don't mind that. Don't, my only problem is if we're going to do it like that on a by leave, then if I have a by leave, I'm just trying to get some.
I understand.
Oh, that's all, that's all, and I understand things come up at the last minute and we're, we're working quickly as possible. Uh, you know, but we are getting emails sometimes late, and I was not against the staff, they're trying to move as quick as they can. I just, you know, again, I just wanted to know, what is that process if we bring a by leave? So that was it, no problem, we'll be able to, uh, continue to work, we're, we're moving beyond this, this point today, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, why don't we put that on our staff meeting, Jackie, um, for, uh, February 2nd staff meeting?
Okay, I'll add that to what Louis has sent me.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our regular agenda item, here's one item on our regular agenda, I see Eric Beck is on there, our county engineer. Hello, Eric.
Good afternoon, commissioners, how are you?
Good.
Hi.
I just have one item today, it is a resolution, resolution authorizing agreement between my office. And the Ohio Department of Transportation to, um, on an as-needed basis to maintain guardrail. On cross-county highway between Colrain Avenue and, uh, I-275. That has cable, uh, state guard, guardrail down the center to keep crossover traffic. Um, from, from crossing over in an accident, um, that's a specialized type of guardrail that we don't have anywhere else in the county. ODOT's familiar with it, this will allow us, as needed, to, uh, have ODOT do repairs on it when, when it's needed. At cost.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Vice President Reese?
Uh, no question.
No question. Uh, Eric, I was wondering, as I rate, uh, read the tax documentation, uh, the $50,000, where is that coming out of?
That'll be out of Roden Bridge, our operating funds, that's a maximum of $50,000 under the agreement.
Okay, thank you. With no further, uh, comments or questions, will, um, I make a motion to adopt resolu- the resolution. Authorizing an agreement between the State of Ohio Department of Transportation. And the Hamilton County Engineers Office for maintenance repair of cable rail on Ronald Reagan Highway. CR number 453 between I-275 and US 27, located in Hamilton County, Ohio. ODOT agreement number 35684.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
So our next, um, order of business, we have some consent, uh, agenda items, number two through 10. Are there any questions or comments as it relates to our consent agenda items? Commissioner, uh, Vice President Reese?
Uh, Madam President, I don't have any, a question on the consent items, but is there any way that we can, um, I don't know, Jeff could just. Not go into detail, but just kind of run through what, what they are. These are mostly just credit cards, um, um, as well. I think that would be helpful.
Madam President.
In front of me, but I'm saying people that might be watching, kind of just tell us what it is.
Um, I, Jeff, you want to do it, or you want?
Yeah, Madam President, I'd be happy. I'd be happy just to, to walk through very quickly, um, the items on the consent agenda. Uh, there's just a few of them, uh, today relatively speaking. Under the Commissioned Administration by Leave Two, this is a, uh, a resident agreement with Thermal Tech Engineering. Uh, for the mechanical, electrical and plumbing, uh, professional services we use down at, um, uh, at the stadiums. And in our parking, and, and for our parking garages, um, for a specific, and anytime a project is needed. Um, we, uh, we need to have it designed, uh, with the, uh, mechanical and electrical services. Thermal Tech is our architectural partner for that, engineering partner for that. Resu- uh, item number three contains, uh, is a, uh, are, uh, actually two purchase orders relating to, um. General, there's a million dollars there, which is the larger one, which is the, uh, general fund postage, uh, for county departments under the general fund. Uh, there's also a sorta, um, item there for $150,000, that is for bus passes. Uh, largely for job and family services clients, I think this one, uh, relates, uh, to, um, uh, seniors. We have a couple of these, uh, sometimes they're senior-related, sometimes, uh, they're for, for youth. I think Laura Wolf is on, Laura, can you clarify which, uh, uh, which client base, uh, this particular item relates to? If you have, there she goes.
Yeah, absolutely, Jeff. This, this is for our, um, non-emergency Medicaid, Medicaid transportation population. This is 100% financed by Medicaid. And that is used to transport Medicaid-eligible consumers in the community to Medicaid reimbursable services.
Thank you, Laura.
Yes.
Item number four is an agreement, uh, with Keep Cincinnati Beautiful. Uh, this is an annual agreement that the Solid Waste District does for scrap tire collection, uh, for $19,000. Item number, I'm going to hurdle a little bit here, items five and seven are, um, JFS 4D contracts. Uh, related to, uh, child, uh, pay their contracts with internal county agencies. With, with job and family services for the provision of support services for child support cases. This was a discussion item in our staff meeting on Tuesday. Backing up one to item number six, uh, this is a resolution authorizing agreement with Talbert House. This is the Citylink, uh, program, uh, that deals with, uh, support for, support services. For Ohio Works First participants, so helping to, to clear, uh, employment barriers. Uh, for people coming through that program and connecting them with work resources. Um, it is a great program, I don't want to short-trip it here, so I know that Tim and Laura are on. Tim or Laura, anything more you would like to say about the Citylink program?
Sure, Jeff, uh, this is Tim, uh, good afternoon commissioners, uh, and thank you, Jeff. Um, yeah, the Community Link, uh, program, um, is something that we, we established, uh, gosh, probably. Uh, 20-some years ago, um, that someone who's receiving, uh, public assistance cash. Um, who has a child, um, has a requirement if there, if there's not a disability or, or something else. Uh, to participate in a work activity in order to continue to receive, uh, uh, the check. And to help them develop, uh, skills or opportunities and overcome barriers in order to do that. Uh, we contract that work and have for the last, uh, 20-plus years, uh, to entities, uh, within Hamilton County. Uh, to work with those clients, they work closely with, with our staff. Uh, these are all federal, uh, TANF dollars, uh, that support, uh, obviously the administration. But primarily, uh, support money to overcome barriers. We may refer folks to, to legal aid or a host of other, uh, county partners. Uh, to enable the, the, uh, participants, uh, to, to move towards, um, self-sufficiency. And I'd be remiss, Tim Dingler is all. Um, and I'd be remiss, Tim Dingler is also on the line, he's the person over here that oversees this. Hamilton County has, before the pandemic, um, always been a metro leader, um, in the percentage of folks who are actively participating and moving forward. And our outcomes exceed those of Franklin and Cuyahoga County and even the other, uh, smaller metro counties. That did not change during the pandemic. Um, creatively, uh, we were able to get computers into the homes of the folks who obviously couldn't go to work sites and things along those lines. Because of the, the pandemic, just like we were working from home, they were as well. Um, and Tim and his staff, along with our contracting providers, did just a great job to ensure, uh, that folks were still able to actively try to, you know, move out of their situation, uh, by participating from home, uh, with a computer that we would have provided them. Tim, I don't know if you want to add, um, any more to that, um, since you're truly the expert on the line here.
Thank you, Tim. Um, there's not a, a lot more. We've, we've, uh, ordered fifty computers, we've been able to distribute those already, and we've ordered another fifty for customers. Um, we service, uh, in this contract about five hundred, um, Hamilton County residents. And, um, about half of those, almost two hundred and fifty of them are employed, um, at least twenty-five hours a week. And, and we have had a lot of success in helping them, uh, during the pandemic, continue to, uh, find employment online. Or also, um, alternatively, if they're working on education goals, like getting their high school diploma or GED, they've been able to do that as well. Um, and, um, this is a, a high-functioning program. It, um, does a lot of good in the community and like Tim said, we're helping a lot of our residents, um, make their way to self-sufficiency through this.
Thank you, Tim and Tim. Um, moving on, uh, item number eight is reporting, is the sheriff's report, reporting no objection to free liquor permits. Uh, those are just items that the board is accepting for the record and advising liquor control, the sheriff's findings. Uh, the treasurer's monthly investment report is included as item number nine. And there's an authorization for the use of credit cards by the Veteran Services Commission as item number ten. So that, those are all ten, uh, consent agenda items for, uh, today, Madam President.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, any additional, um, questions or comments at Vice President Reese?
No, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Drehouse?
Um, no questions.
Um, I'd like to make a comment as it relates to the consent agenda items, um, whoever's watching or listening. Um, you know, as we, um, explain what each item is and you hear the numbers, it's really helpful and it was very helpful for me. Um, Jackie can tell you that there is also supporting documentation on our website. So when you hear the numbers of a hundred and fifty thousand and Jeff gave the great summary. You can also look at the additional, um, information that is attached for item number three, if you have access to the website. And, and Tim will tell you, as we look at, um, information as it relates to JFS, I'll call him and say, is there additional information that needs to be on there? He's really good at submitting that to Jackie. So I would just encourage those that hear the numbers and hear the titles of each one, that if you have the opportunity to get on the website, to get more specifics, uh, that would be great. Okay, um, so we'll move forward and I'd like to make a motion to adopt items number two through 10, uh, on our consent items. You're muted.
I'm, my apologies. Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask now if, uh, Vice President Reese, do you have any additional comments before we close the meeting?
No further comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.